I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Linda, can we have the roll call?
Keith Hoffer.
Here.
Haven.
Here.
Spruell.
Here.
Dobree.
Here.
Handel.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Medina.
Here. All right, then, do we have approval of the agenda? I move that council approve the agenda for June, or for July 9th, 2024.
Second.
Did you say June 25th? Oh, yeah, you're right, okay. Thank you. A motion made by DeHaven and seconded by Lewis.
Lewis?
Aye.
Dobree? Keith Hoffer?
Aye.
Handel?
Aye.
Haven?
Aye.
Yes.
Medina?
Aye. Okay, before I move on on the agenda, I have two announcements I want to give. First, all public commenters will need to fill out a comment card. So if you plan to speak during our, one of our public comment sections, make sure that you fill out a card so that, for the record, we know who's, and that's, that's just our process. So, so you'll need that, to fill that out to be called upon to speak. The other one is, I would like to make a statement on the 4th of July events that occurred last week. So, we are deeply saddened by the events that abruptly ended, the 4th of July fireworks celebration in Cortez. The safety of our community is always our top priority at all public events, and the city does not tolerate behavior that jeopardizes the well-being of our residents and visitors. We extend our sincere gratitude to all first responders who acted promptly and professionally to evacuate Park de Vida and the surrounding area. It is somber and unsettling conclusion to what otherwise was a joyous day. While disappointing, we are relieved that no one was injured and that the suspect was apprehended quickly. We at the City of Cortez are committed to fostering a community where everyone can thrive, and we firmly believe that the unfortunate actions of one individual do not reflect the spirit of unity, community, and safety that defines Cortez. We will continue to work diligently to ensure that all residents and visitors feel safe and secure at our events and throughout our community. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to number two on our agenda, the consent agenda. The listing on our consent agenda is a group of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. The agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by city council. Either the public or a council member may request that an item may be removed from the consent agenda at the time prior to council's vote. I will ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion after reading through the items. A, approval of the council's special meeting slash work session and agenda minutes of June 25th, 2024. B, approval of the expenditure list for July 9th, 2024. C, approval of a renewal application for fermented malt beverage and wine liquor license for Western Refining Retail, Inc., DBA Speedway, number 9499, located at 921 East Main Street, Cortez. D, approval of a renewal application for retail liquor store, liquor license for 1718 Cortez, Inc., DBA Liquid Assets, located at 718 East Main Street, Cortez. And E, approval of a renewal application for a hotel and restaurant liquor license for La Casa de Cortez, LLC, DBA La Casa de Cortez, located at 332 East Main Street, Cortez. Would anyone in the audience or on council like to remove an item to be discussed? Or do we have a motion to approve as presented?
Madam Mayor, I move that council approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Lewis.
Spruell?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Lewis?
Aye.
DeHaven?
Aye.
Keith Hoffer?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
All right, we're going to move on to number three on our agenda, public participation. There's no limit to the number of speakers, although public comments will be held to an overall time limit of 30 minutes. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes per person, may only speak once, and may not cede time to another commenter. And then we're just also, as we improve the technology, we're tightening our process. So, prior to calling upon commenters, the mic will go dead at the conclusion of three minutes. The clock faces you to see your time left, and we have visual indicators showing when you have a minute left, 30 seconds, and when your time is up. Thank you to Donna Murphy. So, the microphone is also now controlled by the, the room, so there's no need to touch or activate the microphone. It'll turn on and off as necessary. And the three minutes start once the speaker states your name. And you'll start with your name and where you live, but you don't have to give a specific address. Okay. And although this section, just because I see new people in the audience who may not have commented before, this section is overall 30 minutes, but we have another public comment section at the end of the meeting. We've just shortened this one to 30 minutes so we can get through with the rest of the business, but the second session is however long it needs to take. But each person gets three minutes. Okay, I'd like to invite Susan Chemnitz to speak.
Good sign.
There we go.
Here goes.
Thank you, Susan.
I just wanted to address the increase in fees on the cora. I'm kind of really disappointed in the council. The fees that the state puts out when they're raising the fees, the reason that there is a limit is because every municipality, whatever, has a different economic threshold. As, so as our attorney, or whoever looks at these reports, isn't paid as much as somebody up in Denver area. And I'm really disappointed that the council went in, except for one council member, actually realized that it shouldn't go up this high. This is like ridiculous. I have a solution for you. The citizens are losing their trust in the city, in the city council members, in the city employees, and that's why you're seeing all these requests. Because when I first came here, there were hardly any requests for coras. And now it's like every time you turn around, there's one. And so I would suggest, as council members and people of the city, that it's your duty to actually have a higher standard of morals, character, and your ethics. So think about what you're doing before you do it, and please, start looking at what you're doing, because it's making us really angry. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. All right, I'd like to invite, invite Joy Bullock up. And I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name here.
I'm Joy Bullock, and I live here in Cortez. And apparently I have the one or two largest bill for water in the city, which makes no sense. The largest water bill we have ever paid in the past was in 1920, or 14, I can do this, in 2023, and it was $445. My water bill last month was $770. My water bill this month was $824. We have cut our water back by 25 percent, doesn't seem to make any difference. My neighbors all claim that basically, they were told that their water bill would be the same this month as last month, which says to me, nobody's reading the water meter, but my bill was $54 more. Something's wrong. They've checked, they've tell me, the city has come and taken a look, and they say, we do not have a leak. There's no problem that way. We have not changed our sprinkler system, not in any way other than to replace a sprinkler head. So I'm not sure what's going on, but I know that you guys have somehow voted to up all the ante on all, on everybody's stuff, and supposedly it was supposed to be somewhere between $4 and $7 increase. Mine's more like $400 of increase. Something is not right. I spoke with David at the Water Department, and I spoke with Brian at the Water Department. Brian said that I should probably zero-scape my yard. And that the reason for the increase was that we were building a new water treatment plant. Then others have told me that it's probably 10 to 15 years in the future. So something is not right. Rotten in Denmark somewhere.
Thank you, Joy. All right, I'd like to invite Brent Farrell.
Thank you, I'm Brent Farrell from Cortez, and I'm going to address the same issue that Joy just did. And I'll start by just telling you that we were gone completely out of the state for 40 days from the end of April all the way to June. During the interim, I had my water inside my house completely turned off because I didn't want to come home to any disastrous leaks. Our water bill came, and it was $300. And we didn't use any water other than our sprinkler system. And we've gotten that kind of a bill twice. Now I understand that rate increases are necessary, but these rates, this structure actually seems punitive. It really is. And we are, as are many people probably, we're on a fixed income, and we can't afford this, this, these rates, can't afford to zero-scape, so we don't really know what to do, other than to very politely come and make it known that these rates seem a little bit out of line, and I will thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Brent. All right, I'd like to invite Kathy Clark up.
Hi, my name is Kathy Clark, and I've been a resident of Cortez for 22 years. I have been a middle school math teacher. I'm mad. And I currently work at Cortez Vision. You can imagine my surprise when I opened my water bill this weekend and discovered it was almost $400. When I regained the use of my limbs and was able to get to my office, I looked at last year's receipts, and similar period of time last year, I had used 800 gallons more, and my bill was half as much. So, that's pretty surprising. Just over five years ago, my husband passed, and I have worked hard to meet my own financial obligations on my own. I value a nice-looking house and a yard that is pretty. And I'm willing to pay for the water to keep my grass living and green, but I cannot afford a monthly bill like this, this month or next month. I am confident, however, that the city council's goal of water conservation was at the heart of this new sliding rate, but this is excessive. I'm concerned that our prosperous little town on the edge of the desert is going to dry up and wither away. Dead dry grass gives the impression of neglect and desperation. Is that the image of Cortez you want to portray? Please consider returning the raw, water rates to the 2023 levels. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, I'd like to invite Anna Peterson.
Hi, my name's Anna Peterson, and I live here in the city, and I own a home. I'm here in person to protest also the water rate hike. I live in a neighborhood where the neighbors take pride in their home and property watering and maintaining such. This rate hike, hike will force many to not be able to afford to maintain their yards. I understand the push for zero-scape, got it? Even though if I wanted zero-scape, which I don't, I couldn't afford it. I couldn't not afford to replace my sprinkler systems with drip, go in and remove my lawn, and put gravel and such. It would cost thousands of dollars, even if I could find somebody that could do it, which is a very big challenge, as we know, to get people to do some of the work in this town. Not many of us can afford this, and so many of our community are retired, and they're on fixed income. They can't afford to reduce it to zero-scape either. So what's going to happen? They're not going to be able to water their yards. As I walk in my neighborhood, there are already several neighbors that have chose not to water their yards. Their yards are weeds and dirt, and there are signs of the trees already dying, and I am serious. You walk around in the neighborhoods, look at the trees right across the street, the branches up above are dying. It's because they're not getting water. It's not just our grass we're watering, it's our trees, and our trees are so vital to us in this community. I encourage you to revisit this water rate hike, to emphasize on maintaining the beauty in our lovely community. Otherwise, I fear we will be, become a community of skeletal trees, of dirt and weeds.
Thank you, Anna. I'd like to invite, can you help me? Uh... Willingson? Williamson, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir.
Charlie Williamson, I live on Shady Lane. I'm here about the cost of water. It just, it seems to me that the goal is to just do, get rid of yards, period, and go to, I call it dry-scaping. And by doing this, what I see is happening is, it's going to drive our property, if we can't afford to have our lawns, it's going to drive the value of our property down. And when you get rid of the beautification that the yards have, it takes away from the community, no kids being able to run around in their yards. And the park would be the only place we get to go play with our grandkids, our kids. It just, I don't know why the cost has gone up so much. And the billing on the usage, how come our meters can read in tenths? How come we're not billed in tenths of gallons? It's neck down to thousand, in the thousand gallon range. Where I'm over, overbill, if I did your math on my bill, and it, it comes in 2,000 gallons more than what your math tells me of my average daily use is. And that is the numbers on your bill. I didn't bring my bill with me, but I'd be happy, I'll put, I'll take a picture of it, and I can post it online for everyone to see where your math and how I came up with that math adds up. But when our property value drops because it's all wilting away, does that mean we're going to go back, and the assessors will come back in and revalue our property? And then let's bring our property taxes back down to where they should be? I'm more than happy to pay for my property tax the way it is now, but that is based on the beautification of my home. So, that is all.
Thank you, Charlie. I'd like to invite Larry Trembley.
My name is Larry Trembley, I live on Shady Lane, and you can guess what I'm going to talk about. I had the water guy at my house today to check, see if I had any leaks. I have no leaks. My bill this month was $300. Last year, for the same amount of water, it was $150. So why, he showed me that the per thousand is $9 per thousand. Last year, it was $5 per thousand. So why did you double the cost of water? We can't afford this. Most of us who live in here are retired personnel, fixed income. I got a beautiful yard, but at this rate, I'm going to let it die. And I'm going to mow weeds, and I'm going to blame you guys on it. Because there's no reason to double the price of water. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, that's all the public comment cards I have. But for some background on the, the water rate study, we, we did a water rate study. We had a company who gave us recommendations to do a tiered rate to help raise money for the severely aging infrastructure that we have, while also balancing, you know, the incentivizing conservation. But I do think it's alarming that this many people are having their bills so high, and so we clearly need to address this. So I guess, staff hears us and...
Yeah, Mayor, we will certainly look into it, we have looked into it. This is about conservation, but I would, you know, and clearly we've talked to these residents and so... The staff has talked to the residents and so on. This really is about conservation. And where the amount of water that is being used, it does need to decrease, but I'm also, you know, disappointed in some of these amounts as well. So I think we need to reasonably look at this and come to a, a conclusion on how this is going to shake out. So, we'll look at it, and we'll come back to council with it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to number four on our agenda. Presentations, we have none. So five is public hearings. Five A is Resolution Number 10, Series 2024, presented by Contract City Planner Nancy Dolestall.
I guess I don't have to remember to turn on the microphones, so good. I'm not good at that. The first project tonight is a request for a site plan for a just under 5,000 square foot addition to the existing private gym, body by design. It's located at 1240 Lebanon Road. Get there. It's zoned industrial. The property is located just to, or Carpenter Reserve is just to the east of the property, and the access to Carpenter Reserve is directly south of the property. Show you there. Do this right. So the, the existing building's right in this location here, and the proposal is to add an addition, like-size addition to it. Zoom in a little closer, so existing building, access road to Carpenter preserves right there. The property is over three acres in size, so it's a larger parcel for the city. One of the, the pieces of information that's important as, as part of the review is that a portion of the property is located in a flood zone, which is the blue color on here. Think you'll see that the addition, which is proposed right in the back here, is probably not located within the flood zone, but you will see a condition related to that coming up here in the future. So here's the proposed site plan. All of this right now is existing. The proposal is to add on to the back of it, again, sort of mirroring the existing building with associated additional parking, et cetera. Here, it will be paved, additional parking. Your criteria for a site plan includes whether the paving layout of the parking streets, alleys, means of ingress egress, provisions for draining, drainage, parking, and landscaping. Going through those requirements, in the I-zone, the minimum lot size, well, is, is only 10,000 square feet. This is three acres, almost 10 times that minimum size. Regarding all setbacks, it far exceeds all the requirements for setbacks and maximum lot coverage, which is 50% in the I-zone, and proposed here for a total of 7.2%. Height will not exceed the minimum 35-foot requirement. The parking requirement for this size of an addition would be total 33 spaces. They're proposing 40, so they're over that. As far as landscaping, the requirement is that you meet 10% of the lot size, which would be 13,722 square feet. They are proposing 11,000 of active landscaping with another 75,000 square feet, which would remain in natural land cover to meet that requirement or exceed it at 62%. The Planning Commission reviewed this and has recommended approval. So both staff and the Planning Commission are recommending approval. We do have five suggested conditions. They're really mostly standard. The only one I would highlight is number four, which is the drainage report meeting. CDPHE requirements shall be submitted and approved by the city engineer prior to issuance of a building permit for the property. They have submitted... They have submitted at this point two drainage studies. They submitted one with application. The city engineer reviewed it, asked for changes. They submitted another one, city engineer reviewed it and asked for some more changes. So we're getting closer, but it's not there yet. So we are requiring that they meet all the, all the city engineers' requirements prior to issuance of the building permit. With that, are there any questions?
I guess I have a question about the landscaping. Did that increase with the building footprint or are we just playing catch-up because there wasn't landscaping before?
Well, I believe the requirement's based on the size of the lot, so it didn't increase with the building.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Mayor, if, if I could, we have a typo in the resolution and the recommended motion. The, the resolution, both in the title and in the first whereas paragraph, lists the address as 1240 Industrial Road and that's also in the motion. If, if you are going to use the motion, I would recommend that whatever your motion is, be subject to an amendment correcting the address to Lebanon Road rather than Industrial Road.
Thank you for that catch. All right, well, we'll invite the applicant up.
I'm Terry, owner of Body By Design. Yeah, we just, we'd like to move forward. We'll do, you know, whatever we need to do, work with city and get everything done that we need to and, and we're just hoping to continue on.
Great. Any questions for the applicant or... Okay. I mean, so it's a good thing that you need to double your size, so...
Madam Mayor, I move that council approve resolution, resolution number 10, series 2024, resolution approving the site development plan for an addition to an existing commercial building located at 1240 Lebanon Road, Cortez, Colorado, in the industrial I zoning district with four conditions as stated in the resolution.
Madam Mayor, I, I would recommend that before you accept a second on the motion, that you open it up for public comment.
Oh, yes, because it's a public hearing. Okay. So we'll table that motion and we'll open this up for public comment. Would anyone from the public like to speak on, about this application? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment section and then we'll take a motion.
I think you have a motion, you, you just need a second.
Second.
All right, motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobry. Before we vote though, he, he changed the address in the resolution. Do we need to say anything about that?
Yes, I would recommend that the motion contain a amendment to the address as listed in the resolution to designate it as Lebanon Road rather than Industrial Road.
Okay, do we need a new motion then? Okay. Did someone, anyone, did you catch the change?
Yeah, I think so. I, I move to amend the motion, which originally stated a location at 1240 Industrial Road to contain 1240 Lebanon Road.
Second. Okay. Motion made by Lewis and seconded by De Haven.
Randall. Dobry.
Aye.
De Haven.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Rule.
Yes.
He Foffer.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We're going to move on on our agenda to six unfinished business. We have none. So we're going to move on to seven on our agenda, new business. Seven A is resolution number 12, series 2024, presented by Contract City Planner Nancy Dossal.
I got the right one here. The next request is from Reed, Walter C. Reed, for a minor subdivision. Is that correct? There we go. Their request here is a three lot minor subdivision. It's essentially a re-subdivision of two existing parcels, which will be, result in three, located at 1082 and 1060 North Mildred Road. Parcels are currently vacant and zoned manufactured housing. Vicinity map here, so this is Mildred Road. Get the laser pointer up. So Mildred Road is here, this is Jackson Street and the existing two parcels right here would be, so street view of the vacant parcels right now. You can see Jackson Street over here and this is taken from Mildred. The proposal will take the two uneven parcels and divide them into three evenly sized parcels to be accessed with one shared access for the two northernmost lots and then a separate, and separate access for track C. I think you can see that's reflecting existing curb cuts on the property. As far as subdivision criteria, what you're looking at is the physical arrangement of the subdivision, the size of the lots versus code and zoning and whether or not adequate easements are provided for the proposal. There, so the minimum lot size in the mobile home manufactured housing zone is 6,000 square feet. The three lots proposed are all just over 7,000 square feet, square feet. So they meet that requirement. When development occurs on the property, of course setbacks would be determined and they would be required at the building permit stage to meet that requirement. As far as agency comments, we really didn't get much from our agencies. No concerns were expressed. So at this point, staff is recommending approval of the minor subdivision with our standard condition that they meet all requirements of utility providers, city departments at, in conformance with city code. Any questions?
And so there's no concern with that hill and line of sight?
Hill?
I mean, isn't that like you're going up a hill?
It's, it's pretty level.
Okay. I'm just thinking of traffic coming out of the hospital. And I want to make sure that the, since it'll become three lots, these addresses, the new addresses will be assigned when development happens.
Correct, yeah.
All right, any...
I didn't have any questions about that. I did, we are jumping from resolution 10 to 12. Is that okay or do we need to renumber it to 11? Stay at 12?
Resolution number 11 was used last meeting for our core fees.
Great, thank you.
But we were a little out of order, planning and zoning. Yeah, we, number 10 was reviewed, planning and zoning, so it all sort of...
All right. That is my question, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. In our possible resolution, it states one condition as stated in the resolution. Can someone clarify that for me?
Council member, I was having a hard time hearing you. Can you say that again, please?
Certainly. Under the, under the possible resolution, at, at the end of the motion, it says with one stated in the resolution. What is the one condition as stated in the resolution? I'm unclear.
Is it this all requirements of utility providers, city departments, CDOT and affected districts must be satisfied as outlined in adopted city codes and other regulatory documents?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Can you tell me what CDOT has to do with any of this or is that just something that's put in the language?
I think that, that's the language we use with every condition. CDOT really would not have anything to do with this one.
And I do notice my name is spelled wrong.
I apologize.
That's okay. And there's two Rachels and we spell it differently.
Yeah. You know what, Mayor? I think what we'll do is if council wants to vote on it, it is factually correct with that one typographical error and we will get that corrected before your signature is applied.
Okay.
I move that council approve resolution number 12, series 2024, a resolution approving the minor subdivision plat for the amended plat of lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 of block 8 of the Cornet subdivision located at 1082 and 1060 North Mildred Street, Cortez, Colorado, with the one condition stated in the resolution and that minor correction.
Second.
Motion made by Dobry and seconded by Randall.
Dobry.
Aye.
Randall. Lewis.
Aye.
Rule.
Yes.
He Foffer.
Aye.
Haven.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. Thank you. We're going to move on to seven B on the agenda, resolution number 13, series 2024, presented by Nancy.
Our, our next request is another minor subdivision submitted by Garcia and Sons, Incorporated. The request is a two lot split of an existing 6,699 square foot parcel located at, it has two addresses because there's two buildings on it. It's located at 450 East Main and 17 North Harrison. Property has two businesses on it already. It's in the central business district, right across from city market. The intent is to create a separate lot for each of the businesses on the property. Here's the vicinity map showing the two properties on the one lot. Gave you a street view shot of them with Garcia and the bakery. This is as shown from Harrison Street. Here's the proposed, so essentially we've got the existing buildings on here. Existing building one, the bakery, Garcia jewelry on the front portion. The idea would be to simply draw a line through, through the, the property so that each parcel will be on its own lot. They both will obviously have frontage on an existing street, meeting city requirements. I've got your criteria there, but we just went over that, so I don't think I'll, I'll go over that again. We did get some agency comments on here about the addresses. They can keep those. There are, there was one, one comment from the city engineer about the access patterns. There was a thought about perhaps restricting access to Highway 160, but that was not recommended. An issue that staff noted with the subdivision is that it does not appear that easements have been created to allow for access, the shared access that currently exists and access to all utilities. So to explain that a little bit better, although they both have access to, to the, to an existing street in the central business district, we don't actually require parking, but they both have onsite parking. And I think you can see from this photo though, that the parking won't necessarily work great if there's a line drawn down the middle without shared easements to maneuver in and out of the parking spaces. So I guess with that, we can go to the recommendation, which is for approval with two conditions in this case. We have the standard meet all requirements and then a second condition I'd suggest, which is prior to recordation, the plat be revised to include easements for existing utilities and shared parking areas. Are there any questions?
Madam Mayor, the, the same typographical error regarding the spelling of your name is in this resolution.
Okay.
And just to add to that, Mayor, we, again, the resolution is factually correct. We will get an amended version to apply your signature to.
Great. And just to clarify, there's, you're recommending two conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
The applicants are here and I have spoken to them about that additional condition.
And, and that condition is stated in the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any more questions or do we have a motion on this?
Madam Mayor, if we suggest asking if the applicants wish to address?
If the applicants are here and like to speak on behalf of this.
My name is John Garcia and I just want to thank everybody on the panel for your consideration and Nancy for her hard work and show of interest for her, her time in that and that's all I've got to say, but thank you.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
And also, Mayor, just to maintain uniformity, is there any public comments we would suggest?
Okay. Yeah, do we have anyone from the public would like to speak about this application? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment section and do we have any more discussion or questions?
I move that the council approve resolution number 13, series 2024, a resolution approving the first amended plat of lots 1 and 2, block 7, FR Coffins Addition to the Town of Cortez, located at 450 East Main Street, Cortez, Colorado, with the one condition as stated, two conditions as stated in the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Randall and seconded by Lewis.
Lewis.
Aye.
De Haven.
Aye.
Randall. He Foffer.
Aye.
Dobry.
Aye.
Rule.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. So now we'll move on to seven C on our agenda. It's CDOT Aeronautical Discretionary Grant Award Resolution, presented by Jeremy Patton, our airport director.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council. So yeah, this is the resolution authored by CDOT Aeronautics. That's our aviation division of CDOT. They handle the resolutions and it incorporates the breakdowns of federal and state funding for our, our airport-related projects. This is a two-part resolution that breaks down the funding, federal, state and local for the parking lot that is federally participated in and then the runway rehabilitation design. So of, of these projects, we are matching with them in order to get these, these projects done. So this keeps us in compliance with the state and federal grant assurances. And just as a background, as you guys recall, you approved ARPA funding. So the majority of the parking lot is already under construction right now as we speak and it, it is funded by mostly ARPA. The areas that are federally funded is where this resolution comes in and they just combined because we're doing these, the runway design at the same time. This is why the resolution is combined. So the, the breakdown is basically for the fiscal impact to participate in the federal-funded parking lot. the breakdown is basically for the fiscal impact to participate in the federally funded parking lot and access road rehabilitation. The state funding is two and a half percent of twenty-two thousand eight hundred. Our local funding, twenty-two thousand eight hundred. Again, that piece is ARPA. And then federal funding totals eight hundred sixty-six thousand four hundred. The total for that element of the resolution is nine hundred twelve thousand. And then Part B of the resolution to participate in the federally funded runway rehabilitation design. State share eleven thousand seven hundred eighty-nine, local, same eleven thousand seven eighty-nine, or seven ninety, sorry. And then the federal piece is four hundred forty-eight thousand. That's just design, again, the construction. I'm going to come to you with another grant resolution this fall when we go out to bid for the runway construction next year. And so to total it, our state share thirty-four thousand five eighty-nine, local thirty-four thousand five ninety, and then federal share of these two grants, one million three hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. With a total project funding of one million three hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred and seventy-nine. So this is staff is recommending that that council approves the mayor to sign the resolution. And again, keeping us compliant with federal and state grant assurances moving forward. You guys have any questions? Pretty straightforward.
Pretty amazing to be able to do these projects with such a high cost and only have to contribute less than thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, again, this is, yeah, these are just pieces of these major projects, but it's it's we're we're very grateful to be in the ninety-five percent category when most airports are far below that, you know, at the most ninety. So you know, we have the EAS program, we have the ninety-five percent federal share. That breaks it down a lot less for for our local impact. So just trying to capitalize on that.
I move that council approve CDOT Aeronautics Twenty-Four CEZ-O-One Grant Award Resolution and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by DeHaven.
DeHaven?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Efeffer?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Ruhl?
Yes.
Medina?
Aye. Thank you, Jeremy. All right. We're going to move on to Seven D on the agenda. Contract for CDOT Runway Fund and Transportation Engineering presented by Brian Peckins, our Director of Public Works.
Okay, Madam Mayor, City Council. City staff prepared a request for proposal for engineering services. The project was advertised on BidNet, the Cortez Journal, and on the city's website. Over four hundred potential vendors saw the listing, of which eighty-four downloaded the RFP. Three firms had follow-up questions and two responsive submissions meeting schedule and budget requirements were received. The proposals were evaluated by a panel of city staff summarized below. The two bids were Bohannon and Bohannon and Houston at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and Jones and DeMill Engineering at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. City staff scored Jones and DeMill Engineering higher than Bohannon and Houston due to its significantly clearer and more specific work strategy and superior proposed data collection methods. Jones and DeMill also proposed additional services such as asphalt ratings that will further benefit the scope of work as defined in the RFP. Council will consider awarding a contract for professional engineering services. These services will include preparing scope and cost estimates for the CDOT long-range call for projects at the August eighth Transportation Planning Region Meeting, the TPR Meeting. This will allow the city to provide project suggestions suggestions to CDOT for funding consideration. The selected firm will also perform transportation engineering for city streets and sidewalks in the form of a transportation master plan. This work will guide future project selection and project design for Public Works to improve the city's transportation network in line with community goals independent from state and federal direction. There's a hundred and forty thousand available in the Twenty Twenty Four Street Improvement Fund for this work, and the staff recommends that council award the contract for professional engineering services to CDOT Roadway Funding and City Transportation Engineering to Jones and DeMill Engineering due to its more qualified proposal, higher evaluated score, and authorize city manager Drew Sanders to negotiate and sign the contract. Any questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
So regarding the long-term planning, will this actually help us prioritize which projects?
Yeah.
As far as?
Exactly.
Okay. So that'll break down right down to the city level, not just the higher DOT sort of?
Correct.
Great. Any other questions for Brian or?
I move that council award contract for professional engineering services for CDOT Roadway Funding and City Transportation Engineering to Jones and DeMill Engineering, Inc. At a proposed price of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign the contract.
Second. Motion made by Lewis and seconded by DeHaven.
Ruhl? Efeffer?
Aye.
Havin?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Randall? Lewis?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye. All right. Now we are on Seven E on our agenda, Twenty Twenty Four Chip and Friction Seal Project Bid Award presented by Brian Peckins.
Madam Mayor, City Council, this is our 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 street project for the year. Public Works has been working on a strategy to replace and repair failing roadways in the city. As part of that strategy, roadways will be reconditioned or replaced with treatments appropriate for the expected remaining service life life of that road. Consider consideration is also given to the speed and volume of each roadway to ensure that a cost effect a cost-effective solution is provided. As part of this plan, the northern part of Empire Street from Highway one forty-five West to Mildred was improved with Mill and Phil last year. The southern portion of Empire Street, due to aging water lines beneath, will be reconditioned with a surface treatment. The same treatment will be applied to other way roadways that are good candidates to receive this type of resurfacing. City staff prepared bid documents for chip sealing, friction sealing, and roadway striping for primary roadways within the city. The project was advertised on BidNet, in the Cortez Journal, and on the city's website. Over four hundred potential vendors saw the listing, of which fourteen downloaded bid documents, and two vendors picked up hard copies from the Public Works Department. One partial bid was received for the friction seal portion of the project. The entire project was budgeted for six hundred and sixty-three thousand. The engineer's estimate for the friction seal portion was three hundred ninety-three thousand one hundred and fifty. The bid received from Specialty Applicators LLC for the friction seal portion was three hundred thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. Empire Seventh, Sligo, Cactus, and Chestnut Streets are among the more traveled roads according to a traffic analysis performed by city engineering staff. These roads are also among the more deteriorated according to roadway condition data collected by Public Works street crews and engineering staff. Based on the amount of travel and existing conditions of the roads, the city engineer recommends applying friction seal to portions of these roadways to maintain and improve their current serviceability. There are monies available in the Twenty Twenty Four Street Improvement Fund to perform this project. The bid was provided by the same contractor typically used by Monizuma County to perform this type of work. Since the contractor will already be in the area, it is able to provide a competitive price despite the lack of competing bids. At the time of year, advertisements for asphalt resurfacing work will likely likely not get a better response, if any, at all. Staff therefore recommends that council accept the bid and award the contract for friction seal portion for the friction seal portion of the project to specialty applicators at its bid price of three hundred thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. Subject, any questions?
What is what is your department's plan for the the other items, the non-bid items on on that bid?
Thank you, Council. So the plan for the remainder of the items, we'll have a couple of options. First option would be going through a contract modification with an existing contract, which might be the quickest remedy to try and get that work done, most importantly, within subject to a couple of changes to see the increase in volume that we see on Empire Street and just make sure that we can safely get traffic in and out of all the side access roads, particularly Sligo and Mildred. The other option would be to send it out to bid again to try and get tractor out. Sorry, the microphone seems to be going. The other option would be to try and get another contractor out through another try and get a second bid to come out. That would probably take longer. Typically, striping contractors are pretty busy in September due to the paving industry. Our suggestion, or at least our idea right now, is to try and move forward with getting the striping done through a contract modification on an existing contract so we can get that work done before winter.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions for Public Works or?
I guess I have one other question. So you it it is coming in under, we only have one bid, but it did come in significantly under what was estimated. Do you do you have an estimate on the savings on the that mobilization, what it would have cost without without that mobilization? Or is that the the existing estimate is really?
So there's a portion of mobilization at bid, but it's only the mobilization for the friction seal portion, so it is significantly lower than the mobilization for the total project just because they aren't mobilizing the other resources. They aren't mobilizing for the chip seal and for the painting, just for the friction seal portion. And the other reason why their mobilization is lower is because
Great. Thank you.
I move that council award the Twenty Twenty Four Chip and Friction Seal Project to Specialty Applicators LLC at its bid price of three hundred thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign the contract.
Second.
Motion made by DeHaven and seconded by Dobree?
Efeffer?
Aye.
Ruhl?
Yes.
Dobree?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
DeHaven?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to Seven F on our agenda, the Cortez Police Department Mobile Data Terminal Project presented by Chief of Police for Knuckles.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yeah, I've been working on trying to get MDTs for the police department for a few years now. Last year, we submitted to or applied for the Edward Breen Memorial Assistance Grant Program and received two hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars to install thirty-four MDTs, mobile data terminals, computers in police cars. To install thirty-four MDTs in in our fleet. That would include our E-Force Silent Dispatch, so officers could use the computers and they would link with our E-Force Dispatch at the PD and our records management system. And it also includes the data, the AT&amp;T data cards, so we have connectivity to those computers. Some of the benefits of MDTs. The real benefit right now that that would come of this is currently officers receive a report. They have to leave the field, go to the police department to write that report. Even even very minor reports can take up to an hour. You get an officer that gets three or four reports, you know, a day. They're coming out of the field writing those reports, you know, that could add up to a significant amount of time. You multiply that over, you know, three, four officers on a shift. I mean, we could be, the community can be losing, you know, up to and even more than twelve hours of active patrol or presence in the city just by the mere fact that they they have to come to the PD, write the reports, and then go back out. So MDTs would allow officers, you know, to do some of those minor reports out in the community, so they're still visible. You know, the community still sees them out in their cars. You know, that in itself can deter criminal activity. MDT terminals enable real-time intelligence sharing, access to databases like NCIC, CCIC in the field to the officer in the car. On the spot suspect assessment, we have some devices at the PD that we have to, in order to use them to identify suspects, we have to send somebody back to the office to get a computer that it'll run on so they can so they can bring them out. These devices would work on these computers in the car. You know, and I believe keeping keeping the guys in the field and stuff like that, it improves on crime prevention and response times as well. I I I will say there there will be times that officers will have to leave the field to do reports. There's just, I mean, it's not going to eliminate that completely. But these these smaller minor reports, officers can deal with those in in their vehicles. And I think MDTs, you know, if officers have the ability to, you know, do some of their own searches and and queries on their computers, that can free up some time for the dispatchers as well. That's a very busy department. So I think MDTs would free up, you know, some of that time. Bids received, the city put out an RFP and we received three responses. One was from MHQ west of New Mexico, out of Albuquerque. One was TKK Electronics out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. And the third one, Southern Computer Warehouse Incorporated, out of Marietta, Georgia. Their bid wasn't accepted due to an incomplete packet, so they were, we received it, they were they were not considered. We convened a panel of five city employees to review the bids. It was determined by that committee, or that committee selected MHQ, the highest bidder. But we based that on on these reasons. MHQ installs and warranties the MDTs onsite here in in Cortez. TKK and MHQ does it themselves. So MHQ will come from Albuquerque, install them here. TKK will install them on seat onsite, but they use a third-party contractor, and we really don't know who that is. MHQ is our current vendor. They're the vendor that is putting the emergency equipment in our Twenty Twenty Four vehicles. So there's a there's consistency there. And MHQ has come up and shown me I have seen the work that they do and it's quality work. So that's that's the reason and we went with MHQ, even though they're the higher bidder. Physical impacts, the grant covers the initial purchase and installation of thirty-four MDTs, all mounting hardware to get them in the vehicles and running. The E-Force Silent Dispatch licenses for the first year and the AT&amp;T FirstNet data cards for the first year. Continuing costs are minimal, but will require budget allocation for from for years to come. E-Force Silent Dispatch annual license and support fees in year two will be about two thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-five cents. Year three and beyond will be that twenty-nine ninety-four seventy-five plus three percent annually, so every year it will go up. The FirstNet data cards from AT&amp;T in year two are annually will run fifteen thousand and fourteen dollars and forty cents. So our recommendation, staff recommend recommends that city council authorize the expenditure of two hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars of city funds to purchase and install thirty-four MDTs. E-Force Silence, E-Force Silent Dispatch software for each user and AT&amp;T FirstNet data cards for each user and be reimbursed by the Edward Breen Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. Grant number 2022-DJ-23-01-23-1, titled Cortez MDT Grant Award. Pending any questions, that's all I have.
What is the, what's the anticipated life cycle or lifetime of an MDT system?
So the, the computers are, they're a rugged laptop, but the industry standard's about five years. And I, our replacement program would probably consist of the annual, when we get new vehicles, then we would start kind of when we come down to needing to start replacing some, instead of thirty-four and five years.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was asking. So you, the idea is to kind of phase the, phase in the replacement over time. But, but we would, we basically would be budgeting for replacement in the future as opposed to applying for additional funds.
Most likely, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Chief, you, the bid is for $234,990, or that's, that's not the bid, that's how much money we're going to get. And the bid was 212. Do you expect to use 20,000 more for something else, or why the discrepancy in the amount of money?
We don't expect to use anymore. We did not budget in, or I did not reach out, anticipating probably some training. And there's going to be a cost to have an E-Force kind of train the officers on how to use the Silent Dispatch. So there's a little bit, there's going to be some money left over that we may not be able to use. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it looks like we're going to have about $20,000 more than we're going to need. And I was just wondering if there was a use for that, or do we need to take that much money, or can we use it somewhere else?
And I, I'm, I'm actually not tracking that. I thought, I thought it was closer to, it was between 2,000 and 3,000, going with MHQ.
It looks like it's 234 versus, 234 for the grant versus 212 for the.
For MHQ.
For MHQ.
Or are you including the year-two costs as well, the 15,000 for the AT&amp;T cards and the E-Force Silent Dispatch?
I apologize, I wouldn't include in year two. I didn't.
To kind of piggyback on that question, I just had a question about, so in the, in the motion where we would be authorizing to accept the bid and then authorizing the expenditure, should we, should we be authorizing the grant expenditure amount of 234,990? Or should we be authorizing the bid expenditure amount of 212 and change?
Mayor and Counselor, it would be the 212 and change. So how a burn grant works is you actually have to put together a program, and this is what their projected amount was. Luckily, they came in below that. They can submit an application to amend that, that program, basically, you know, the package of what they're wanting to buy in there to spend that extra $20,000. Burn money, as it is with law enforcement, is, it's a giveaway. It's nice to have. And honestly, I would suggest that we apply, or well, amend that grant application and to the program to do something like put a torch or firearms that you need and a few things like that. So let's not give up the $20,000, but let's not ask Council to do the full 234,000 and I, let's do exactly what the bid amount is.
There may, so there, are you looking only at the MHQ quote? So I think where the other money is probably spent is when you add in the E-Force licenses, which I'm imagining, I did not provide that spreadsheet that I have, and the, and the AT&amp;T data cards.
Will the grant pay for that?
The grant does pay for that.
So that would be an extra amount of money?
It's going to be the extra, yes. So if you're looking only at MHQ's quote, that is only the computers and the hardware installation warranty, that's, that doesn't include, MHQ's quote doesn't include.
The E-Force is separate.
The E-Force is separate. And I apologize, but I thought that I had submitted those as attachments.
You did.
It's in the attachments.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and.
Shows it as 19,960.
Yeah, and for that reason, that's why I feel that we're closer to only having about 2,000 and change left over.
That's exactly where.
Okay, okay. Yeah, sorry about the confusion.
Then we don't need to amend the, okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah, and thank, thank you for bringing it up so we could work through that.
I move that Council accept the bid from MHQ west of Albuquerque, New Mexico, and authorize the expenditure of $234,990 of city funds to purchase and install thirty-four MDTs, E-Force Silent Dispatch software for each user, and AT&amp;T data cards of each user, to be reimbursed by Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, JAG 2022 DJ 2301-23-1, Cortez MDT Project Grant Award.
Second.
Motion made by Spruul and seconded by Randall.
Randall.
Aye.
Dee Haven.
Aye.
Keith Puffer.
Aye.
Dobry.
Aye.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Dina.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel.
Okay, we're going to move on to seven G on our agenda. Authorization to accept a proposal for, from Woods Canyon for Cultural Resource Survey, presented by Helen West, our Community and Economic Development Specialist.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from this. I am married to an employee of Woods Canyon Archaeological Consultants.
All right, then we'll wait for Lydia to leave the room. Thank you. Okay. Is her microphone on?
It says don't, okay. I thought, sorry, sorry, Madam Mayor and Counsel. These new-fangled systems are confusing. I think I'm getting old. So this is the, I've been up here a couple different times, just as a reminder, the Historic Preservation Board in the City of Cortez was awarded a $12,941 grant to conduct a class-three cultural resource survey of the Carpenter-Greer natural area, which is owned by the city. We put out an RFP for cultural resource consultants in May. Proposals were due by June 21st. We had two people, or two consultants respond to the RFP. And we convened a group of two representatives from the Historic Preservation Board and two city staff to review the proposals. We were all in agreement that Woods Canyon should be the recommended proposal winner. And the reasons for that, even though their bid is higher, they are very well-known in the community, so they're local. They also completed, Woods Canyon completed the preliminary archaeological survey of the Carpenter area in 1993. And they've done several other projects with the city and have proven to be a reliable and timely partner. The proposal by Woods Canyon is still importantly within the fiscal limits of the grant, so there is no fiscal impact to the city, apart from a little bit of grant administration and possibly my time, but not much. The difference, the reason for the difference, and another reason why we wanted to go with Woods Canyon, is Woods Canyon is projecting a total of 240 working hours on this project, whereas Collier's Engineering is only projecting 110 hours. So we are expecting a more comprehensive result of that survey with that extra cost. And then, before I leave, time for questions. In the motion, there was a typo that should read in the amount of 12,941. My dyslexia got the better of me, and I just switched those numbers, so please forgive me. With that, I have, I'll cede it to you guys.
Any questions for Helen or staff?
Madam Mayor, I move that the Council accept the proposal from Woods Canyon Archaeological Consultants, Incorporated, in the amount of $12,941, and authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign the contract with this firm for the completion of the Class III Cultural Resources Survey of Carpenter and Greer National Natural Areas.
Second.
Madam Mayor, point of order before a vote is taken, I believe the correct motion is 12,491.
No, no, it is, Drew, they, Dr. Randall is correct. That was my typo.
Disregard, sorry, I heard that wrong.
All right, motion made by Randall and seconded by Lewis.
Spruul.
Yep.
Keith Puffer.
Aye.
Dobry.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Dina.
Aye.
Thank you, Counsel.
All right, do you mind getting Lydia?
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to seven H on our agenda, Resolution Number 14, Series 2024. This is a resolution waiving the right of the City of Cortez to the first refusal and first offer in connection with the sale of affordable housing, presented by Drew Sanders, City Man.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Counsel. As discussed last meeting, a presentation was given regarding House Bill, or Colorado House Bill 24-1175, which essentially gives Colorado local governments rights of first refusal and first offer in connection with the sale of certain types of affordable housing properties by private sellers. The Council instructed staff to come back with a resolution waiving our right to that and presented the attached resolution here. So in accordance with that, staff does recommend that Council approve Resolution Number 14, Series 2024, which essentially waives our right of the City of Cortez to first refusal and first offer in connection with the sale of affordable housing, and the resolution is attached.
All right, do you mind just giving a quick summary, maybe for the audience of like what this was? Because, you know, we felt like it was going to be a burden on developers and, and businesses to have to offer their sale to us first, and we're not really in need of property.
Absolutely. If I can get my screen up on, to be projected.
Thank you.
All right, essentially, like I said, House Bill 24-1175. So what this does is gives local government the right of first refusal or offer to purchase qualifying multi-home properties and to provide long-term affordable housing or mixed-income development. So to purchase existing, it also gives us the right to purchase existing affordable multifamily rental properties. Now, there's not just every property, it's special ones that are consisting of not less than five units, and this excludes mobile home parks, and also a commitment to use that property as long-term affordable housing. So it grants us the right of first refusal, so what that means is that the existing affordable housing would be subject to one or more restricted use covenants or recorded agreements, and ensure that affordability consists, is consistent with affordable housing finance assistance requirements. So the seller under this bill is required to give notice to us as the local government and the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, and then two years before the final expiration of the last existing affordable restriction on the property. Also, the second notice is not less than six months before expiration, and then an additional notice when taking action as a precursor to sell the property. So if they're getting ready to sell it and take any step in that direction, they must notify us under this bill. So once we receive a intent to sell notice, we have fourteen days to preserve that right of first refusal, and then an additional thirty days to make the offer or purchase and agree to close on the property within sixty days. So if they reject our offer, they must provide us a written explanation and invite the local government to make a subsequent offer, so renegotiate or rebid. So this gives a little more information on what those are, the multifamily residential units of fifteen to 100 unit. We do have the right of first refusal on that one. And then, under that same one, the local government, we still have seven days to respond to those, that multifamily residential property, and then to evaluate the purchase. And then it gives several requirements for the seller in here. And then, as part of that, they're waiving any right, we can waive our rights to purchase that. And then essentially, if we don't respond within seven days, we've automatically waived our rights. So other applicable uses, local governments, you know, we can partner with other entities. So if we were to purchase something, we could partner with a private or a nonprofit entity such as the Pinion Project. And it also allows certain properties to be exempted from the first right of, right of first refusal. And it also requires the Attorney General's Office to enforce the provisions in this section. So with that, Council discussed this two weeks ago, and it was determined, number one, that in the past, Council has decided we do not want to be landlords, and this is not appropriate for us. Number two, Council had discussed that this is not a good fit for the City of Cortez, and we would like to opt out of it. Therefore, we were instructed to bring forth this resolution, and it is now before you.
Thank you for that recap.
And Madam Mayor, I would add that the statute specifically authorizes local governments to waive their rights for first refusal and first offer. So it's not just us coming up with the idea, the statute anticipates that there may be communities that don't want to put that burden on their development community, and they don't want to put a burden of potentially having to become landlords on the local government.
Yeah, I, the only thing I was going to add is that I originally brought this to Council because I didn't believe that we want to be party to potentially taking of property rights. I think we respect property rights and want to work in partnership with developers in our community. And also, we don't, we want to avoid any, any undue additional reporting for our staff with, that is already limited to, the staff time is already limited, so we don't want to have any additional undue reporting. And I guess with that, I'll make a, I move that City Council approve Resolution Number 14, Series 2024, a resolution waiving the right of the City of Cortez, Colorado, to first refusal and first offer in connection with the sale of affordable housing.
Second.
All right, motion made by Dobry and seconded.
Lewis.
Aye.
Dee Haven.
Aye.
Randall. Keith Puffer.
Aye.
Dobry.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Dina.
Aye.
Okay, we are moving on to eight on our agenda, draft resolutions and ordinances. We have none. So nine on our agenda, City Attorney Report.
No your, no report this evening.
Okay, so number 10 on our agenda is City Manager's Report.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, I do have. Yes, mayor and counsel, I do have a report for you this evening. The following are the items that I'd like to bring to you. First of all, the city of Cortez has been awarded a federal grant in the amount of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars for the design services for the runway project of the Cortez Airport Phase One to include a precision path indicator system and identifier lights and lighting system upgrades. So for those in the pilot community or the aviation community, this is a big deal, where our lights are not all that wonderful right now. The runway will be rebuilt in twenty-two-five, and will also include asphalt improvements, upgrades, and upgraded signage. This will also help bring the airport into conformity with current standards. Number two, the city of Cortez's twenty-two-three audit was completed and submitted to the state, Office of the State Auditor three days ahead of the June thirtieth, twenty-two-four deadline. We earned an unqualified audit opinion, which can be translated to a clean audit opinion, and we received no recommendations. This is the highest and best level of audit opinion possible. The application for the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFPA, Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting was also submitted ahead of the deadline. The checklist for the award requirements was forty-eight pages long. Additional information required for the award included twelve different stats, sections which covered a period of ten years. Ms. Sarah Coffey, Ms. Lynette Reese, and Finance Director Kelly Kosky were able to provide all the required information. The GFPA award will be announced later in the year. So just for reference for the public and for council, this is the first time in many years that we have got our audits in on time, and we've done one audit in a year. And thank you, Kelly and staff, for your good work. Your money is safe, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to eleven on our agenda, city council committee reports. Eleven A is the mayor's report on workshop. So first, we got a presentation from our municipal judge, Beth Padilla. Let me find my notes. So Judge Padilla shared with us that there was four hundred and thirty cases this year, which is an increase from last year. They added a staff member, which has greatly improved their ability to process these cases. A hundred and ninety-nine of them were criminal, two of those were land use-related, a hundred and seventy-nine were traffic-related, four were animal-related, and forty parking. Typical jail time for some of these is three to five days, or suspension jail. And then people can trade community service hours for treatment hours. We do not have a probation officer, but we do have three attorneys on call for anyone that can't afford an attorney, and we have a really great reputation and consistent call when we need attorneys to our community, thanks to the great staff members and the relationships they've built in the municipal court. And they are hosting their second annual regional gathering of their peers on August second. And then the Outreach Court has seen thirty-two people, and four have successfully graduated from it. And I encourage you all, if you want to know more details about that, to watch our. And then we had an executive session to evaluate, to do our annual evaluation of the city attorney. And then we had a general discussion where council member Keith Buffer brought up the idea of capping the number of marijuana stores for our community. And so that discussion will be on a future agenda. All right, so then we'll move on to eleven B on the agenda, which is other board reports. We'll start with Robert. Nothing, okay. I don't have any other board reports?
I have a report on the golf advisory committee. They met on Friday, June twenty-eighth. The month of July has a lot of activities going on. Today, there was a junior tournament. I think they had around twenty-five kids participating. This past weekend, we had the firecracker. It's the golf course's second-largest tournament. We had a hundred and ninety-two participants. Many of those individuals were from out of town, staying here. Let's see, we also have a junior camp that's starting up this month. They'll have around fifty kids. We also have two tournaments coming up. For the men, it's the club championship on July twentieth and twenty-first. For the ladies, it's the president cup on July twentieth. Talked about a prairie dog issue. We've contracted to have those prairie dogs removed, and that's been taken care of. And I guess the thing that I was most impressed with were eighty-one percent of last year's revenue already, and we have four and a half months to go. And I just want to put a shout-out to the employees there at the golf course. It's, it's never looked so good in the last ten, fifteen years that, that I've been attending. And we had a golf superintendent there working round the clock. I was going home, my golf cart, at about nine o'clock, and he's still out there working. And it just reflects the kind of employees that, that we have here. You know, our, our employees are our greatest asset, and it's, we're, we're so fortunate because that's what makes everything work. That's my report.
Thank you, Bill.
Our meeting fell on the Fourth of July, so our next meeting will be in August.
Great. Okay, moving on on our agenda, twelve other items of business. We have no executive session tonight. Thirteen is our second public participation section. Do we have any comment cards for this period? Okay, we'll end the public participation section, and then do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobree.
Dobree.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Buffer.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
De Haven.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. All right, thank you all for coming.